Good evening. Let me go ahead and call this regular meeting of the Rio Grande City, Gruia Independent School District to order. It is Tuesday, October the 12th, 2021. It is currently 6:30 with the Rio Grande City High School cafeteria. Thank you to Rio Grande City High for your accommodations and hospitality. We really appreciate that. Section one, meeting called to order. I'm going to take a roll call for purposes of determination of a quorum. Diaria, Dr. B. Babenow, absent. Mr. Elizado Velazquez Jr., absent. Mr. Johnny Pope IV, not present. Mr. Noe Castillo. Mr. Basilio D. Vareal Jr.
Present.
Mr. J. Peña.
Present.
And myself, Ari Ramírez, are present. Let the minutes reflect that we do have enough board members for a quorum. Section two, Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Peña, will you help us with the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Absolutely. The Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, infinite and just as for all.
Thank you, Mr. Peña. Section three, approval of minutes for the public hearing and meeting held on September 7th, 2021, and the regular board meeting held on the same date, September 7th, 2021.
Mr. President, I move that we approve section three as presented in our board session.
There's a motion by Mr. Vareal. Is there a second to that? Second by Mr. Castillo. All who are in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Section four, public forum. I do have three requests. For purposes of time efficiency, I will allow three minutes per speaker. The first one is Jessica Sanchez, who will be speaking on the mask mandate. Jessica Sanchez.
Mr. President, you want me to keep time?
Yes, please, Mr. Elizado. Yes.
Hi. My name is Jessica Sanchez, and I'm here to speak about the mask mandates. I am here to speak about the mask mandates policy in case of any you are not aware of all the dangers masks pose to our children's health. Let me share with you some information. Six masks worn to school by children were sent to the University of Florida laboratory and found to carry at least 11 dangerous pathogens that can cause fever, ulcers, acne, yeast infection, strep throat, and meningitis, and sepsis, and many more. And if this doesn't concern you, then you are in a violation of GA 38 and the TEA guidelines. And what you guys are doing, mandating masks to our children, is against the law. I am not going to put my son or my children in danger because of your policies. You guys are violating Greg Abbott mandate policies. You guys are violating our children, traumatizing our children with testing. Why are you permitting to test our children in school? You know, my kids come home scared, talking about how you all test our kids in school. Some start bleeding from their nose. Some are traumatized and crying that they don't want to get the test because the parent doesn't know better. How are you allowing this in school? Just for the benefit of you? For the money? For what? You guys are violating our constitutional rights.
Thirty seconds.
Checking our children every single day with a thermometer is wrong. Why? Why should you check a child with a thermometer if he doesn't have signs of fever? That is wrong, what you all are doing. You're violating our constitutional rights and freedom. Mandating vaccinations for our kids, it's wrong.
Time's up. Closing comments, please.
Many, a lot of children are having-
Closing comments, please.
-inflammation of the heart because of the vaccines. If you don't care of this, then you shouldn't be there sitting in that chair. You're violating every single right of this country.
Thank you for your comments, ma'am. I have to stop at that point, Ms. Sanchez.
It's wrong what you are doing. And we are going to get more parents to speak because everything that you guys are doing is wrong. I'm not going to stop because you're going to kill thousands of children in Rio Grande because of the vaccination. It's wrong.
Ma'am, the time is up. I think you need to- Thank you, Ms. Sanchez. Thank you. All right. Also, I believe it's Maria M. Flores. I think that's right, who will be talking also about the mask, vaccinations, testing, and antibacterial.
My name is Maria Mayela Flores. I'm a first recorded patient, but today I'm going to talk to you with my heart in the hands as a mother. A mother of three in the family. They're implementing a vaccine that in less than six months, they took it from the agencies that we know that have been used. Your lawyer knows that they've made many agreements with these agencies for the same reason, because they take the products that aren't good for children. Here, my daughter, this is my legacy, this is the future of our humanity, and it's the priority. They need to open their hearts and see the reality of what is happening. They're all tied together. Everyone is occupied, thinking about money, material, that I have to work, put the vaccine in, without seeing the reality that it's the children who are going to suffer. They're being taught fear, fear of everything. What's going to happen in the future with these children? Fear is killing. Now we're losing the essence of the human. You have to separate them, separate them, separate them. They don't look at each other's faces. They have fear of an embrace. The human needs the essence, the embrace, the love, touching, and all of that is being removed. They don't see it. Why not implement? Our bodies were designed with- Yes, they're young, they're little. We haven't seen that they're being affected by the virus. It's not registered, this virus. They didn't do it. We don't know if it exists or not, in reality, but everyone is occupied, like always. I have to work, I have to work. Leave the material. The main thing is the humanity, and it's what is being done. We don't look at each other's faces. We don't know if it's- We don't even know who we're talking to. You have fear of everything. Fear of the vaccine, fear of the exam, fear of everything. They don't realize what is happening in reality. So I ask you to wake up with your heart in the hands, and be aware of your surroundings. If you have children, you put on a mask all day, all day. We're using antibacterial. We know that a virus can't fight against bacteria. There's nothing to compare. We know that our immune system has defenses that are against bacteria. It's not just 1% of the bacteria that's bad. So why are we using-
You have to finish the three minutes, please.
Why are we using antibacterial for a virus?
Last comments, please.
I don't have anything else to say.
Thank you. All right, the third individual for the public forum is Ana Karen Peña, who wants to talk about the Starr County Fair student highlights. I will give you the same three minutes, Ana Karen.
Good evening, President Ari Ramírez, Superintendent Alonzo Peña, and our wonderful school board. My name is Ana Karen Peña, and I'm today representing the Starr County Fair as its 2021 Starr County Fair Queen. The Starr County Fair, to many of us, is important. And to me, it means tradition. In many ways, I learned, passed down skills from my grandma that she learned from her mother, and I'm pretty sure other participants can relate to that as well. To me, and I'm sure to many other participants as students, gain benefits when it comes to social skills, or when it comes to time management, as well as responsibility and stepping out of the comfort zone once in a while. Now, my experience as a Starr County Fair Queen has been unique this year. I didn't get to experience the Wild Game Dinner this year, as well as the carnival, and those are all huge sources of income for last year's graduating class scholarships. The Starr County Fair is having a lot of trouble. We weren't able to raise as much money as we do the previous years due to COVID. So in closing, I am here asking for your help to grab some funding for the Starr County Fair, so that we, as the community, can continue to making memories for our local students. Thank you.
Ana Karen. I believe that is it for public forum. Let's go to proceed to section five, reports and information. Item one, recognitions. A Purple Star campus designation for 2020 through 2022 and 2021 through 2023. That's John and Olive in Ojoza Elementary and Ringo Middle School. Mr. Marco Olivares.
Good evening, Board President, members of the board, Mr. Peña, ladies and gentlemen. The Department of Other Special Populations comes before you this evening to recognize two campuses with the Purple Star campus designation from TEA for commitment to meeting the unique needs of military-connected students and their families. The 86 Texas Legislature created this special honor through Senate Bill 1557. Effective April 9th, 2020, TEA awards the Purple Star campus designation to campuses that apply and meet the established criteria every fall. There are currently 161 campuses in the state of Texas with this designation and seven in Region One. We would like to recognize John and Olive in Ojoza Elementary and its principal, Ms. Oneida Surita, with this banner for 2020, 2022, and Ringo Middle School and its principal, Ms. Maribel Montemayor, with the banner for 2021, 2023 school years. If they could please come to the front.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Olivares. Item one, B, students' recognition for artwork for superintendent's math challenge. Dr. Letizia Trevino.
Good evening, Board President, Mr. Ari Ramírez, board members, Mr. Alonzo Peña, Superintendent of Schools, and the community members. We would like to recognize three students who participated in the superintendent's math artwork contest. The math artwork contest was held during the month of September, and the purpose for this particular contest was for students to show their creativity in mathematics, in art, so that the artwork or the artwork that won would be placed on the incentives that would be given to the students who participated in the superintendent's math challenge. So Mr. Peña has challenges that he had designated throughout the school year, and the first one was the math challenge, which just happened last week and was very successful. So the three students that we would like to recognize for having created the artwork that was used for the math challenge, which you have, I think it's on your table, it's a little supply bag with the artwork, well, that artwork was done by three of our students here at RGC GIST, and the three students, as I call their names, they did get a prize, by the way, already, but we wanted to recognize them here at the board meeting. So we have three, and the first one is Samantha Carmona. If you could come forward. Could you, Mr. Peña? Do you want to give the- Samantha Carmona is from the Early College High School, and her picture is the one that has, you know, their hair on the little bag. And the next winner or the next person is Brianna Lopez. Brianna Lopez is from the Magnet Middle. Brianna, where's Brianna? And our third student is Sofia N. Carmona from General Ricardo Sanchez. These are our three students, and we'd like to take a picture with them. And of course, just to let you know, we have future art contests that will be coming this week, so we would like all of our students to participate. Congratulations.
Thank you, Dr. Trevino. Item one, C, National Principals' Recognition Month, October. This is Elsa Vareal Morris.
Good evening, Board President, board members, Mr. Peña, and members of the audience. It gives me great pleasure to honor our campus leaders this evening. These individuals worked countless hours under tremendous amount of pressure to ensure the safety and well-being of our students. There isn't enough recognition that the district or the state can give our principals. They work, they don't complain, and they keep doing it day after day. At this time, I will have San Juanita read a letter from Governor Abbott proclaiming October Principals' Month.
Good afternoon, Board President, Mr. Ari Ramírez, members of the board, Superintendent of Schools, Mr. Alonzo Peña Jr., and staff and community. Like Ms. Morris said, I'm going to go ahead and read this. It's from the state of Texas Office of the Governor. Principals hold one of the greatest responsibilities, shaping the education of the students of this state. Texas schoolchildren represent the future of our state and nation, and a rigorous, well-rounded education is essential as we look to build the Texas of tomorrow. A principal's commitment to excellence and dedication to improving the educational experience of their students is vital for the future success of the Lone Star State. Through visionary leadership and tireless pursuit of success for each and every student, principals guide and support their schools in ways large and small every day. These educators help shape future generations by ensuring their students have a success, high-quality education in a safe and supportive environment. They also work collaboratively with our teachers to build high academic standards, set performance goals, and utilize the best best practices in order to achieve these goals. By playing the different roles of leader, communicator, disciplinarian, budget analyst, policymaker, and so much more, principals are among the hardest-working, yet often least-recognized individuals in education. Each and each year, the month of October is dedicated to honoring principals and recognizing the essence, the role they play in ensuring a positive climate and culture for both students, faculty, and staff. Texas would not be the same without their passion, unique perspective, and dedication work in our education system. At this time, I encourage all Texans to learn more about many contributions and accomplishments of elementary, middle, and high school principals across the state. Principals carry a culture of excellence that is essential in education and ensures Texas' future will be better and brighter for all. Therefore, I, Greg Abbott, Governor of Texas, hereby proclaim October 2021 to be Principals' Month in Texas and urge the appropriate recognition whereof. In official recognition whereof, I hereby affix my signature this the 22nd day of September 2021, and it's signed by Governor Abbott. This is, we went ahead and framed this, and we have a little something for each and every principal. I think at this time, we're going to go ahead and pass them out.
All right, we have a perfect attendance this evening. All of our principals are here. Mr. Pedro Omar Peña, Academy for Academic Enhancement. Ms. Nora Rivera, Alberto Encelia Barrera Elementary. Mrs. Yvette Peña, Alto Bonito Elementary. Ms. Melinda Gonzalez, Dr. Mario Ramírez Elementary. Brenda Carmona, General Ricardo Sanchez Elementary. Mrs. Thelma Martinez, Gruia Elementary. Ms. Oneida Surita, John and Olive in Ojoza Elementary. Mrs. Lorena Trevino, La Union Elementary. Mr. Javier Garza, Ringo Elementary. Mrs. Laura Barrera, Roque Guerra Elementary. Mr. Daniel Ramírez, Academy for Academic Enhancement Middle School. Mr. Rene Peña, Gruia Middle School. Mrs. Maribel Montemayor, Ringo Middle School. Mr. Jesse Rodriguez, Veterans Middle School. Mr. Ariel Osuna, Gruia High School. Ms. Lisa Gorena, Early College High School. Mr. Jorge Peña, Rio Grande City High School. And Mrs. Perezita Garza, Disciplinary Alternative Education Program and Chance-to-Be Campus.
for our students and staff. All the goals that we've set together so far, we've reached 100%. You know, we set our goal about bringing our students back, and you've worked endless hours trying to, you know, make sure that our students were safe, that we opened our schools, and, you know, that we're doing the best that we can in instruction in person. So you all did a tremendous job. Now you all are working on not only maintaining the attendance, but also looking at socioeconomic status and so forth. But, you know, you all do a tremendous job every single day. It does not go unnoticed. Thank you very much for being the ones leading our students, our staff. You know, there's not enough words, like the proclamation says. You know, it doesn't go unnoticed. Thank you all for the sensational work that you do every single day. So thank you.
Very welcome. All right, item one, D, report and recognition on HB3, Reading Academies.
Good evening, Board President, members of the board, Mr. Alonzo Peña Jr., Superintendent. For House Bill Three, passed by the 86 Texas Legislature in June of 2019 and updated by the 87th Texas Legislature in June of 2021, all kindergarten through third-grade teachers and principals must attend a teacher literacy achievement academy by the end of 2022-2023 school year. This includes special education teachers, literacy specialists who see kinder through third-grade students in small groups, and kinder through third-grade departmentalized teachers. The purpose and goal of the reading academies is to increase teacher knowledge and implementation of evidence-based practices to positively impact student literacy achievement. We had a total of 94 teachers and administrators complete Cohort One for the 2021 school year. Teachers completed 60 hours, and administrators were required to complete 42 hours. They worked on 12 modules where they had to complete reflections, quizzes, tests, and submit to artifacts before completing the course. We are extremely proud of our teachers and administrators for completing this state-required continuing professional education credit. Congratulations to everyone for your hard work and dedication. At this time, I'd like to call on the teachers who are here today. Please come up as I call your names with your certificates. Mayda Alaniz. Teresa Ariasola. Isamar Valderas. Laura Barrera. Alisa Cantú. Cassandra García. Sylvia García. Reina Navarro. Sandra Olivares. Aleida Peña. Pedro Omar Peña. Yvette Peña. Daniel Ramírez. Maria Teresa Ramírez. Nadia Ramírez. Claudia Rivera. Nora Rivera. Julie Seines. Mariza Saldivar. Teresa Solís. And Connie Trevino. Congratulations, and congratulations to all the other participants.
No, no, no.
Thank you, Ms. Saldivar. Item 2, Report on Students/Staff Highlights. Mr. Ariano Osuna.
Good evening, Mr. President, Mr. Superintendent, distinguished members of our board, and everybody here joining us in person. Everybody's streaming us live on our website and on our Facebook. We're gonna go ahead and present a video that we created to highlight all of the accomplishments that our students and staff went through during the month of September. We're gonna be doing this every month, highlighting everything that happened the month prior. So for right now, we're gonna go ahead and show you our video that we created to demonstrate everything that happened in the month of September.
Rio Grande City Gruya ISD aims for excellence in every aspect of school life. Every campus and department has been up and running since before the school year began to ensure that every student has an opportunity for greatness. From keeping our schools safe and clean, to ensuring that our students are healthy and well-fed, as well as providing after-school enrichment and tutorial programs, RGCG ISD is committed to making a well-rounded student who is physically, emotionally, and academically balanced. The month of September proved to be another step in our ongoing quest to achieve that. RGCG ISD honored the nation's fallen heroes on September 11th. Our athletic teams continue to improve and show excellence, rising in the ranks of high school athletics. Our mighty gator and rattler marching bands continue to prepare for pigskin. Our FFA students showing at the State Fair in Dallas, Texas. STEM Fridays at AC2E Elementary, the Superintendent's Math Challenges, National IT Professional Day, National School Custodian Day, National Security Guard Day, even going so far as to celebrate National Dot Day at some campuses. Our schools have held character parades to promote literacy, our counselors have developed anti-bullying initiatives, our teachers have attended trainings and staff developments, and we have honored and celebrated our culture for National Hispanic Heritage Month. Our RGCG ISD students and staff have taken the bull by the horns this past month, and our campus hallways have been filled with life again. At Rio Grande City Gruya ISD, we strive to give you, our students and our staff, an experience of a lifetime.
Once again, just a little bit of a highlights of the events and activities that our wonderful school district has prepared for our students in the month of September, and we have many more activities. And as you all know, our superintendent never lacks for ideas. So we can't wait to see what's gonna happen in the month of October, and we will keep you abreast of these activities in the coming months. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Osuna. Let the minutes reflect also that Mr. Johnny Pope IV is now present at 7:05 PM.
Mr. President, I'd just like to thank the teachers. I know we went into this one, but the teachers have done an outstanding job. They had to do about 60 hours of online learning of reading academies, and they also have to take assessments every so often. So, thank you, teachers, for the reading academies and, you know, for working so hard every single day, you know, even beyond the classroom, because these hours they did had to be after-school, weekends. So, thank you very much, teachers. You know, it does not go unnoticed. We value your hard work and your dedication to our students and staff here at Rio Grande City Gruya ISD. So, thank you for your sensational work.
Item 3, Update Report from RGCG ISD Health Services Department. Mr. Rolando Barrera.
Good evening, gentlemen of the board, Mr. Superintendent Peña, staff and community members. I want to give you a little update on our Health Services Department here on the campus. So, every, every single day that continues to go on, our enrollment has increased, and our classrooms continue to get back to, you know, normal times. We're trying our best. We continue to have very, very, very minimal any active cases in our, in our community, in our, in our campuses and departments. We attribute this because we believe that we are doing everything that is recommended by the CDC. And once again, that is encouraging, once again, mask use, distancing as much as possible, staying home when sick, quarantine and isolation protocols, you know, all these things that we have been doing from air filtrations that we have purchased in the past, everything is helping us out and keeping our staff and children safe as much as possible. We do strongly encourage to listen to the most updated science, and we go with the CDC, the FDA, the immunization committees of the United States. They have very, very rigorous testing protocols, for example, vaccines. So, we do encourage and promote the vaccines. We want you to listen to the CDC and to have that conversation with your healthcare provider if there's any, any, any questions that you may have in regarding to the vaccines. So, we continue to offer and promote every single vaccine that we've given here at our campuses. Parents have signed consent, and our staff members have also signed consent. So, no vaccine is mandated in our, in our district at the moment, you know? We, we don't foresee that. People do have the option to get it whenever they do choose to get it, if they would like to get it, okay? We do monitor for any symptoms at our campuses, and we address it as fast as we can. So, if a child is coughing, a child has congestion, anything that, any symptom that can be linked to COVID, we address it at our campuses. We were fortunate enough to have telehealth services available for anybody that would like to use it. Once again, we offer it. Once again, they always have that option to go to their own healthcare provider or go get tested on their own, okay? We do this to take care of all our staff and all our students. You know, we, we do strongly believe that mask use does help a lot. You know, we do not want our children to spread any possible COVID and send it home. You know, here in the United States, 120,000 children have been orphaned due to COVID, 14,000 alone in Texas. You know, we do not want, you know, to try to send anything home as much as possible. More and more every year, every day, you know, we are trying to get back to normal times, and a little bit at a time, it is working, you know? But I just want to continue to stress that we are doing everything that is required of us, and we are doing very, very well. Once again, our, our principals, our superintendent, our central office staff, custodians, counselors, everybody is working extremely hard to try our best to get back to normal as, as fast and as safe as possible. Working at a school district, school district was always hard enough. Now, of course, we have to worry about a pandemic and making sure our children are educated and safe as possible. I just continue, want to say, everybody, you know, our nurses are continuing to educate parents with, once again, the most updated guidance that we have from an accredited, you know, source, whether it be the CDC or National Institute of Health, FDA. So, we do strongly continue to try to advocate as much as our, that we can for the health and safety for everybody. We are always available for any, any questions or anything to, any, any, address any concerns, and we try our best to help out our, our community, our staff, our students. We do offer, for example, remote conferencing for anybody that is getting addressed, anybody that has any symptom or anything while they're waiting to go to the doctor. We try to help you out. We, we offer you the continued instruction for your child to continue and get educated. The district is doing everything it can, and it will continue to do everything we can. I believe we are one of the ones, we started that remote conferencing, I believe, our, our central office team, you know, did the remote conferencing before it was even approved by Texas, I believe. So, we were on top of that. We, we helped out with any vaccine clinics when, when needed. And, once again, we, we just offer all these services to our staff and community or students, and we continue to, you know, try to do best for everybody. I think that is it at the moment. You know, we, we are applying for a grant in early, it should be any, any day now, and the grant is gonna allow us to help out and get extra funds for, whether we have vaccine clinics on our campuses, to hire extra staff, or, or to have any testing events in the future. If, once again, we're hoping to get this grant very soon, and if so, it will, it will continue to benefit our community, our staff, and our students as, as, as much as possible.
Rolando, just a couple of questions. Let's make it perfectly clear. Our district does not mandate vaccines. We are providing vaccines for people who want to get vaccinated, correct?
Correct, sir. So, we have never mandated the COVID vaccine, you know? At the moment, every single person that I know have, the parents have signed off for the child to get the vaccine, or the adult has signed off. So, everything is optional.
Next question is, the Moderna vaccine, there's still not a booster for Moderna, correct?
I believe they should be meeting later on this week, sir, and they will have an updated guidance on, on the Moderna booster and possibly for the students, 5 to 11. So, more information would, would be available towards the end of the week.
Last thing I would say, Rolando, I always say you're Superman of our school district as far as COVID. I want to thank you for everything you do for our district, everything you do for our children, for our community, for our students, for our teachers. You are truly Superman, and there's no kryptonite for you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Once again, our staff, our nurses at the campuses are doing amazing, and they continue to do amazing, in my opinion, as well. So, thank you all for giving us the, the support and in order to keep everybody safe as well.
Thank you, Mr. Barrera. Thank you so much.
Item number four, Update Report on Construction Projects. Mr. Marine Lopez.
Hello, Mr. Board President, Eric Ramirez, members of the board, Adolfo Peña, Superintendent, and members of the audience. I know we have a, a short video, but I want to go over specifically where we are at at this point with the bond construction. I know community is very interested to see where we're at at this point. We still get calls weekly to see where we are at. I'm gonna go over basically everything that was passed in the bond and where we are at at this point. So, in regards to Proposition A, Gruya Middle School, we are working weekly with our architect, Delphino Garza. We are at the civil engineer phase. The location was previously accepted by the board. We have the location already next to Gruya High School. So, again, it's, it's moving. You know, of course, we, we want everything to move a lot faster, but we have so many projects going on at the same time that they're moving at, you know, at the pace that they should be. So, that's where we're at there with Gruya Middle School, with, working still with the architectural design and looking to get a civil engineer to get going there with the land. In regards to the two warehouses, shipping, receiving, and cafeteria, we pretty much have a location, not official yet, but we're looking at an area by Dr. Ramirez Elementary. That's where we're at there with, with that project. Career and Technology Construction, we have met with Director Adelina Vareal and her team, and they have advised us what their construction needs are, and we met with, with her team and with the architects. So, we pretty much know what is gonna need to be done for Rio High School and Gruya High School in regards to the Career and Technology Department. Bus Barn, I have personally talked to, as their Transportation Director, Mr. Juan Garcia, which I have not seen anybody more patient than Juan when it comes to all of these projects. You know, he, he's, you know, made it clear that, you know, he knows where he wants it. He's made it aware to me, but again, I want to thank him because he's been very patient. You know, we're, we're gonna get there, Juan, we're just not there yet, but I know that he knows that it, you know, it will happen. So, that's, you know, I have spoken to him about the bus barn. HVAC and Roofing, again, a blessing that they were, you know, part of this proposition of, of this bond that was passed. It was very sorely needed as a district, and these two HVAC and roofing have been ongoing district-wide, you know, as, you know, as needed, you know, at the campuses. Paving the fort, we are also at the civil engineer phase. We are looking to get a civil engineer onboard and then move, move on with that project. Moving on to Proposition B, the two swimming complexes, again, we have met with our architect design team led by Raymond Jigneck, and we are at the stage where we are going over the programming phase, you know, the lanes, what exactly we're gonna get, the instructional pool, the diving area. So, we are at that phase along with the location phase. So, we have already started with the testing of, of the materials, testing everything out there at the project site. So, that's where we are at with, with Proposition B. Proposition C, again, we are also with the architect design team led by Ms. Lourda Warren. We are in constant communication with her. Also, I don't know if it's official, but we are looking at a certain site that, you know, will be unbelievable once made official. I don't know if I can say, Mr. Peña, I don't think it's official yet, but it's looking great if it works out, you know, in terms of the location for now. But right now, where we are at, we are again at the architectural phase with Ms. Warren. Proposition D, it is everything having to do with Joe R. Sanchez Stadium. I know our Athletic Director, Mr. Ray Ramirez, is on that. Proposition E, also having to do with athletics, with our Athletic Director, Mr. Ray Ramirez. A couple of things that are ongoing right now, we have the turf that, again, is, is ongoing for our baseball and softball fields, and along, also in this proposition, we have our wrestling for Rio High School and Gruya High School. Again, our architectural team is looking to pair up with our swimming pool team and kinda try and put the locations together in the same building, try and maybe get more bang for our buck. So, that's where we're at in regards to everything having to do with bond construction. Any questions at this time in regards to, to the bond?
The only thing I'm gonna say is that now you pass by Fort Ringgold and those roofs, before, they looked real bad, and I'll be honest with you, it's added a lot of, what's the word to use? It's uplift, life to the fort. I'll be honest, you, you pass by the highway now, and it, it, it's, it's a lot nicer than before, it looked terrible. So, that and, and the fields, you can say the fields are coming along a little, they're coming along now pretty strong. So, for me, it's the, the life of the fort, or those roofs, at least, it doesn't look like, basically, something that just got forgotten in time, basically.
And, and thank you, Mr. Vareal. Now that great, great intro here for me in regards to the roofing, and I think that's what the video is going to be about. We, we have the, the fort there, what is Student Services, and I want to say Roque Guerra Elementary and Alberto Encelia Barrera Elementary. Mr. Peña, is that pretty much? I wanted to make sure that I covered all of them, and again, that's, that's the video that, that will be played here right now. all of them. And again, that's the video that will be played here right now.
Rio Grande City Gruya ISD has been hard at work in an effort to make our schools and our buildings safe and better for our students and staff. We want to ensure that our staff is healthy and comfortable so that our students have the best environment to learn and grow from. Every day, we get closer to seeing our softball and baseball fields being fully outfitted with brand new turf, while construction on the roofs of Alpató Encelia Barrera Elementary and Roque Guerra Junior Elementary have been completed, as well as work on the buildings at the entrance of Fort Ringel. We would like to thank everyone who has taken time out of their schedules to ensure these projects continue and are completed on time. At RDCGISD, we offer experiences of a lifetime.
And again, Board, this is where we're at right now. We have upcoming projects here that we're looking forward to continue at the campuses. So again, if no other questions, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Appreciate it. Item number five, report on 2020, 2021 bilingual ESL dual language annual evaluations. Mr. Jesús Martinez.
Good evening, Mr. Ramirez, Board President, members of the board, Mr. Peña, Superintendent of Schools, and audience present. It is the time of the year. I have to present the bilingual dual language ESL program evaluation before November the first of this year. Texas Education Code 89.1265 requires that I do this annually. And I ask for your time. It's going to take me a few minutes to present this. We have three programs currently in place. In the elementaries, we have dual language immersion one way. And this program requires that the students learn both the English and the Spanish simultaneously. The goal is for them not to lose their native language. In this case, those students that are, first language is the Spanish, is to reinforce it, both in reading and in writing, as they are, of course, progressing with the English language. For 2020, 2021, we offer dual language from pre-K all the way to fourth grade. This evaluation is based on last year. The next program that we have is Transitional Bilingual Early Exit. This program, as the students are learning the English, they're kind of losing the Spanish. And so that is the reason why TA is pushing more towards the dual language programs. For last year, we offered this program for third graders all the way to fifth graders. So even though we have students taking the dual language, there might be some students that did not, are not in that program. So therefore, they're in this program, which is the early exit. For middle schools and high schools, we only have one program, that is the English as a Second Language Program Model. This program requires that the ELAR teachers, reading and writing, be certified in ESL. And they must provide the shelter and instruction to those students that are ESL. For the elementary, I forgot to mention that the teachers have to be bilingual certified. And for the dual language program, we can have ESL teachers in there as long as they are team teaching with a bilingual certified teacher. By law, when we do not have enough teachers certified in bilingual or ESL, we do have to apply to TA for a bilingual exception and waiver. We've been doing this for the past few years. And last year, we submitted a waiver and an exception for four teachers in the elementaries. And the reason I have four in red is because we actually have 35 that are not bilingual certified. But we were able to pair some of them with bilingual certified teachers that are not in the classroom, so they are support area teachers. But for four, we were not able to find a bilingual certified teacher to be able to tag them to those teachers. And for the middle schools, we submitted the waiver for 16 teachers that were not ESL certified. Of course, when we get this waiver approved, the TA gives us one year for these teachers to go through training, staff development, and hopefully within a year, at least attempt to pass the bilingual or the ESL test within the year. Just to report to you, because it is required that I report to you, we had 10 teachers that passed the ESL 154 exam last year during the pandemic. And we had two teachers that passed the BTLPT. Now, the BTLPT, which is the bilingual test, is not an easy test because it is, it's a five-hour test that is completely in Spanish. And they have to know, listen and speak and read and write. And what happens with our teachers is that they do know the speaking, but they struggle with the writing. And if they don't know the full academic Spanish components, then they're going to struggle in passing this exam. But we are continually working with them. And hopefully, at the end of this year, you know, we can get more teachers to pass the BTLPT. The ESL is easier to pass because it's a complete English exam. Just for your information, we got the 202021 bilingual exception and waiver approved on February the second of this year. Now, the waiver and the exception requires that we provide staff development for the teachers and that we spend 10% of the total bilingual state allotment. And so that 10% equals to about half a million dollars that we have to spend on staff development for those teachers that are not certified. And in there, we can include teachers that are certified. And through the staff development, we're also providing the bilingual stipend at the end of the year. And that's why we require that the bilingual and ESL teachers have 12 additional hours of staff development to be able to be in compliance with TA. I have to report to you star data. And the star data, as you're going to see in the following graphs, because of the pandemic, you know, there was learning loss, there were regressions. And that was expected because of the situation we were experiencing. So you can see right here, we have the, and I'm just going to go over the district and the bilingual ESL, which is the top. We had some students that came in to the star test. And based on the results, as you can see, there's a lot of, you know, growth that needs to happen now that we have the students back in school. It is very difficult when the students were just online, especially in the area of mathematics, because mathematics is not an easy subject. And sometimes when you're in front of the teacher, students struggle. So just imagine, you know, being in front of a computer and if there's no supervision sometimes for the kids at the house, that led to learning loss in all areas. And so you can see, like I said, this is the schools. And I'm not going to go over the schools. You have this report. Later on, you have any questions, you can just let me know. As far as the middle schools, as you can see there, we also had learning loss in those areas. And the ESL is very close to the regular students. There's a few points, sometimes two, three points, but we are very comparable to the regular students. And then we go to high school. And in high school, you see all the subjects that the students were responsible for last year, English one, English two, algebra one, biology, US history. And once again, you know, we are very close. In some areas, we did surpass the state. But in some areas, we're not. But we're very close to achieving that mark that the state gave us last year because of the pandemic. And here you can see the middle schools in the area of algebra. And of course, algebra is one area where we've been doing very, very well. The, I also have to report to you how the little ones do when it comes to the reading and math elementary. And once again, because of the situation that we experienced and we're still experiencing with the pandemic, there was learning loss. As you can see, and this data was provided to me by the Early Childhood Department, Mrs. Marisa Saldivar. And as you can see, we started very well. And then when the pandemic hit, we started seeing the learning loss. And that's what you see in those graphs. And you see kinder first grade, and then you go to second grade, third grade. And of course, this data is beginning of the year and then end of the year. And then we finish with fourth and fifth grade. And the same thing happened with mathematics. As you can see, mathematics, we're seeing that there was learning loss in there as well. The next data that I have to report to you is TELPASS. And even though last year, it was very challenging to be able to finish TELPASS or get students to come and do that TELPASS, especially for the listening and speaking and reading components that are online, they have to come to school. The state did not allow us for the students to be able to take this test from the house. No test could be taken from the house. And so under TELPASS, I'm happy to report to you all that we did extremely well. When it comes to the students that took the exam, we had in K through second, we had a total of 284 students, which is 33%, that score one proficiency level. So that means that they improve in their language skills. And total, we had 305, which is 35%. Now, the state is at 40%. We're still five points behind, but there was growth. There was growth, even though we're still not at the state level. Now, for grades third through 12, we were at a 28% with students that one proficiency level. The state was at a 30%. And then we finished with a 29% and the state was at a 31%. But then when the state gave us the performance for English language, which is 36%, and every campus has to surpass or achieve that 36%, now, of course, our goal is to surpass that 36%. And we're happy to report to you that we had, out of the 15 campuses, we had 13 campuses that did extremely well. And what the state did was, instead of comparing the data of this year to last year, they did it to 2018. So as you can see there, with the exception of Gruya Middle School, which still showed tremendous growth, but they were short by two points of getting that 36% mark. And then, of course, Gruya High School, which was the only campus that had a regression there. Other than that, we had excellent results. And I'm happy to announce to you that we finished at a 49% as a district. We are the third district in the valley, just behind two other districts by two points. And this is just a report that shows to you how Lead Forward was able to determine the percentage for our district. I do have to do a writing report that is just for your information. And basically, it's what I just told you, it's in that reading report. Then Imagine Learning is the program that we are currently using for language and literacy, and also mathematics. And the report, really quick here, what you see is that we had students that, as you can see in the circle in different colors, we had students that had 30-plus hours. And of course, they did extremely well. We had students that had 20 to 30 hours, 10 to 20. Of course, our goal is to improve the orange. We want more students to be able to do these programs, especially at home, because this program is allow, the students can use it from the house. And as you can see here, we have the student usage by grade levels. And they all, based on the students that were able to log in online and participate from the house, as you can see, the passing rate was in the 60s and 70s. So that means the students were using it. Not all of them, but quite a bit of students were using the program. And then we had the literacy and growth and vocabulary growth. And as you can see here, you can see that, once again, we had quite a bit of students that were using, that had growth in literacy and growth in vocabulary. And then it goes by grade level. And kindergarten was one of the grade levels that had a very good student growth. And that is great for us because, as you can see, pre-K and kinder, that's when they're learning the phonics and learning to read. And so it was crucial that the students use these programs from the house. So I'm happy to see that kindergarten was definitely using the program. And so here it goes by schools. And it gives you just a breakdown of how the schools did as far as vocabulary growth and especially vocabulary growth. And I want to really quick show to you a student success story so you can see really what the program is about. It's not only the listening and speaking and the literacy and the vocabulary, but it also allows the students to record themselves. And so what we're going to play to you is really quick, a student that read in November 13, 2020. And then you can see the growth at the end of the year, April 14, 2021. So.
They will eat all our crops.
So that's at the beginning of the year. And then the same student at the end of the year.
These need a good place to grow. If they fall too close, the plant that made them, they may not get enough water or water. So how they get, they get to a good spot on the ground.
And then, of course, we have the Imagine Español, which is also part of this program. Imagine Español is just for pre-K to second. And once again, what you're seeing here is the student usage and the growth. And I also want to show to you a student success from a first grade student from Dr. Mario Ramirez Elementary.
La ardilla vive en el árbol.
And then at the end of the year.
El sol no quería, el sol tenía frío. No quería salir metido en las nubes. Se ha puesto a dormir.
Put me on the program? I want to take that program? You ever heard me speak Spanish?
So, and then we go into Imagine Math. So Imagine Mathematics also has data based on usage and based on growth. And it goes by campuses as well. And then it goes breakdown by campus. Now, I do want to mention to you that the company, in working with the school district, tries to create during the year motivational contests. And so you can see there, last year, we had Deleiza Ramirez Garcia from General Ricardo Sanchez Elementary, who was the contest winner because of the number of hours that she spent using the program. We also had Galilea Leal, a kinder student from Join Olive in Ojosa, who also was a winner because, and what they want, they want a tablet, a reading tablet, provided by the company because of the number of hours they spent using the program. And I also want to recognize at this point, Roque Guerra Elementary, Ms. Laura Barrera and her staff. Because last year, they were selected as the only school in the district as a beacon school, which is a national honor given by Imagine Learning for the usage of the program and the growth they show. So congratulations to Ms. Laura Barrera and her school. The other program that we have is Summit K-12. Summit K-12 has been instrumental with us, especially in the areas of listening and speaking. And I'm happy to announce to the board that just last week, we received a notification that Gruya High School, and, excuse me, Rio Grande City High School and two teachers, which is Ms. Sulma Sandoval and one of our retired teachers, Ms. Mindy Garza, along with Gruya Middle School and Veterans Middle School and General Ricardo Sanchez Elementary, were selected by the company as state finalists. And they're going to be recognized at this year's DAVE, which is a Texas Association for Bilingual Educators, which happens at the end of this month in El Paso, Texas, for the tremendous use of the program and the gains they have shown. So once again, congratulations to all these schools and teachers from our district. Besides Summit K-12 and Imagine Learning, we also have Rosetta Stone. That is a program that we utilize for our recent immigrants, students that are in our schools within the first three years and learning the English language. And the results-driven accountability hasn't been released. Obviously, just for your information, bilingual is responsible for 11 domains. And this is where we get rated as far as if we get TA intervention or not. For the past years, we had been at stage zero. But because of the pandemic, we don't know how we're going to perform once they release the data. But once that happens, I will inform Mr. Peña, and Mr. Peña will let you know. And just for your information, the enrollment, as you can see, this past year, we had 10,004 students in the district. Out of the 10,004, 8,453 were bilingual or ESL, for a total of 84% in the district. So as you can see, we are a bilingual ESL district. And we, I have to report to you as well, the denials. And denials are those students whose parents do not want them. They qualify for the program, they are in the program, but the parents do not want the services. And so they're considered denials. And so for 202021, we had 12 students that are considered denials. Even though they're denials, they still have to comply with the TELPASS and take the state exam. And in order to be exited from the program, they have to meet the criteria as well as the regular students. And Monitor Ones and Monitor Twos, those are students that have been exited from the program. And we have to check their progress for the next two years once they exit the program. So we had 135 Monitor Ones and Monitor Twos, we had 50. And then this is the campus enrollment based on the number of emergent bilingual students. By the way, as of September the first of this year, the new term to refer to English learners is now emergent bilinguals. The emergent bilinguals progress to parents, every year, we have to send progress to parents. We do it through the LPAC and we do it through the, every third, sixth week, which is progress report, and at the end of the six weeks. And of course, I have to provide professional development. There you have some of the trainings that we provide. There you have some of the trainings that we provided throughout the year, and there's many more that I did not list. We do have a binder in the department, if anybody would like more information. And we also have to, a major component is that we have to have parental involvement trainings, and I do want to thank Mrs. Norma McKee for always stepping up and helping us provide these trainings. As you can see there, some of the trainings that we had last year, of course, they were online because of the situation, virtual, and we also were able to have an online concert for parents with Andres Un Dos Tres, which is a Colombian singer that has been recognized by the Grammys for the music that he provides in English and Spanish for families. We had Dr. ET, who is being recognized as a national speaker for bilingual students as well. And then we had, like I said, Ms. McKee's different online programs that she presented. And of course, there has to be district and campus collaboration, and that happens to the CNI, the Campus Improvement Plan, that we work together. And to conclude, I want, I have a little presentation for you. It won't take too long, but I do have two students here that are going to do a little presentation for you. From General Olive in Ojosa Elementary, we have a kinder student, Itana Jay Rios, and she's with Mrs. Anadelia Garcia. And then after Itana, we'll have Danalia Viña, one of our sixth grade students from Veterans Middle School, who was a bilingual student last year, and because she's in sixth grade this year, she's now an ESL student. So if they can, if Itana can come over here to the front, and Danali. And after that, if you have any questions.
Good evening. My name is Danalia Viña, and I'll be reciting a poem on what being bilingual means to me. Porque hablo español puedo escuchar los cuentos de mi abuelita y decir familia madre amor. Porque hablo inglés puedo aprender de mi maestra y decir I love school. Porque soy bilingüe puedo leer libros y books, tengo amigos y friends, disfruto canciones y songs, juegos y games, y me divierto el doble. Y algún día porque sé hablar dos idiomas podría el doble de cosas, ayudar el doble de personas y hacer todo lo que haga el doble de bien. Because I speak Spanish, I can listen to abuelitas' tales and say familia madre amor. Because I speak English, I can learn from my teacher and say I love school. Because I am bilingual, I can read books and libros, I have friends and amigos, I enjoy songs and canciones, games and juegos, and I have twice as much fun. And someday, because I speak two languages, I'll be able to do twice as many things, help twice as many people, and do everything I do twice as well.
If she's shy, that's, that's okay. Don't worry.
That's okay.
We're getting them. That's better than Jay would have done. So that's, that's, that takes a lot of courage right there, just to come up, so thank you.
Ilva. Thank you. Ilva. We want to take a picture with the school board.
Yes, yes, of course.
No, that's just. He's like, no, no.
Thank you, unless you have any questions.
Any questions, comments, concerns?
No.
Mr. Martinez?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. Item number six, report on referral information and October calendar events. Ms. Garcia, science?
Good evening, members of the board, Mr. President, our superintendent, and everyone in attendance. Today, I'm going to provide information based on the substance use referral. I know Mr. Peña had a question last time in the last board meeting, so I do not want to leave him hanging. Basically, once a student is identified as having a chemical dependency issue or a misuse problem, the campus counselor will do the referral form. That referral form is sent to me. I will go and make parent contact and do the screening with the student. Based on the results, it'll be determined if it's either prevention, intervention, or postvention services. Currently, we do have under 10 referrals so far, which is pretty good. One needing residential treatment, which has already been assessed. I am currently working on a prevention intervention plan for the district with Dr. Okanya, and that is going to be divided into three tiers, which is prevention, intervention, and postvention services. We do partner with Scan, serving children and adults in need, to ensure that our students do get different services, as well as Border Region Behavioral Health Solutions. We have currently right now, RGV Protects. RGV Protects is working along with us to provide as much prevention education as we can possible. We started last month providing presentations on the dangers of social media and sexting as well. Currently, we do see a rise in vaping, which is being addressed, especially in the high schools. I know that the police department is doing a great job providing the legal aspects with that. So the month of October invites Red Ribbon Week, as you all know, and that is when we celebrate and honor the life of Enrique Quique Camarena, who lost his life fighting the war against drugs. So I did provide a calendar. Last week, we did celebrate bully prevention, in which the kids engage in different activities, pajama day, wearing their clothes inside out to show that, you know, their feelings get heard from the inside out. We do have, from October the 25th to the 29th, we do have presentations district-wide. Elementary and middle school will be virtual, just so we can make sure that we do, you know, keep social distance a little harder with the little ones. And the high school presentations will be in-person, provided by Border Region. We also have a door competition coming up on decorating your door. The, the drug-free theme this year is Drug-Free Looks Like Me, so we're inviting all teachers to participate in that. It's been done before. There's going to be one winner per campus. The winner will get a Red Ribbon Week recognition certificate, as well as a pizza party. So there are going to be different initiatives taking place year-round. We're going to make sure that we do provide prevention education, not only in the month of October, but in every month. We do have RGV Protects providing one presentation per month to the different campuses. So at this time, is there any questions on the referral process? Anything?
Any questions?
Well, I think I just had some of the questions last time about some of these services. I think that my concern is that there would be an uptick, right? Because maybe some of the childhood kind of depression and kids staying at home, and I'm glad you mentioned the vaping. I'd actually heard some middle school students over talking, and of course, it wasn't my place to say anything, but I heard them asking about which were the best flavors and stuff, and I'm thinking, wow. I mean, I don't know much about what that is, but, you know, I know that we've been, especially a little bit in the legal community, we, we, we're concerned because we've been seeing an increase in some of these substances that are not natural substances, they don't derive from natural substances, they're, they're heavy chemicals, and, and I just, I just foresee a necessity for, definitely for prevention and, and, you know, hopefully not, but, you know, treatment. But I'm glad that, I'm glad that you're helping out, and I really would like to know how we as a board could help out in the future, if you do see anything.
Okay, thank you, yes. And I also do make myself available for the parents. I provided a presentation last week through the parental department on the different ways that these students are hiding the substances. So the parents were really intrigued by that, and I just don't show that to the students because I don't want them to get ideas, but it's very informative for the parents as well. I'll be presenting tomorrow as well on the services and different ways that the parents are aware of what services we provide here in the school district.
Are there treatment options for the parents?
There is through Scan. They have an outpatient program specifically for family counseling.
Local?
Yes, it's local, and they're all free of services. The treatment services, if and so I do have a student that needs residential treatment for three to six months, it's all paid for. There's no cost to the parent at all.
But there's no referral process yet for parents, or I mean, is that something that, I know that's kind of difficult, right?
If there's an outreach from the parent to me, I will make sure I do find those resources for them, yes.
Where's Scan located at these days, ma'am?
Scan is located right next to the transportation. They're in kind of the district.
So basically, it's, it's, it's in our campus, correct?
Yes, but the treatment is out in Laredo.
But the good thing about it, that the organization is within our campus, so if we, if we do need them, they're there.
Oh, yes, yes.
Ma'am, you said the treatment's out in Laredo?
Yes.
That's the nearest treatment?
Well, I'm working right now to try to find one in the Palm View area with Dr. Okanya. Yeah, we're trying to find, there is tropical Texas, but we've built a rapport with, with Scan. Yeah, because then it does come in with the cost and stuff for the parents, so this is, has been the, the best resource so, so far.
Okay, noted. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Garcia. I think that concludes the reports and information. So let's go ahead and move to section six, recommending approving the consent agenda. The board has agreed to discuss the following items. All of the items below that are not called out will be approved by consent. Consent agenda item number one, consider and take possible action on donations to Rural-Gonna City through ISD. Do you have a motion or any discussion on item one?
Mr. President, I move that we approve the consent agenda item one, two, three, and four, as presented in our board packet.
There's a motion by Mr. Varela. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. Castillo. Any discussion required on any particular item? None, there being none, all those in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Action item number five, consider and take possible action on request for use of school facilities from city of Rural-Gonna City, Pee Wee Football League.
Mr. President, I move that we approve item five and six, as presented in our board packet.
There's a motion by Mr. Varela. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that motion.
Second by Mr. Peña. Any discussion required? Okay, there being none, all those in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Vote is four to one with Mr. Castillo abstaining. Motion passes. Item number seven, consider and take possible action on agreement with Stark County Juana Approbation Department for a progressive sanction officer.
Mr. President, I move that we approve item seven, as presented in our board packet with a little discussion.
Okay, there's a motion by Mr. Varela. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. Castillo. Go proceed with this discussion.
The only thing, how much is it costing us?
The amount that we have contributed the past two years, and what we're recommending for this one too, is $8,696.
Do you know how they come up with that amount? Because I saw Roma pays $2,000, we pay $8,600. I'm wondering why the big difference?
No, all I know is that there is no law requirement on the amount. This is optional, and yes, Roma pays about $2,000 in the, in the past years. And so basically, we were paying at one time $20,000, then it went down to 15, and then we reduced it to $8,696.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? All right, there was a motion by Mr. Varela. Is there a second by Mr. Castillo? All those in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Item number eight, consider and take possible action on pay application, number one, to hazardous construction on synthetic turf, baseball, and softball fields.
Mr. President, I move that we approve item eight, nine, 10, as presented in our board packet, if anybody has discussion.
There's a, there's a motion by Mr. Varela. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that motion.
Second by Mr. Peña. Any discussion required? Okay, there being none, all those in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Item 11, consider and take possible action on contracting engineer for civil engineering services for MPC, MPC Testing Center, drainage for Ringgold, New Grilla Middle School, and high school canopies. And before I entertain a motion, Mr. Peña, I know there's some clarification or some addendum you'd like to add to that particular item.
Yes, sir. Mr. Garcia will probably be presenting in a few minutes. We did get, received some quotes for two of the projects, but we're still pending quotes for two others. So, you know, our recommendation, if allowed by, you know, the board members, is give us the authority, you know, board council, myself, to look at those quotes when they come in, and if y'all are okay, we go ahead and, instead of waiting for the next meeting, go ahead and approve based on the recommendation.
For all four projects?
Yes.
So we have the MPC, Grilla Middle School, the drainage, and canopies.
Right. Let, let Mr. Garcia present, and then we have questions, and I can elaborate.
Go ahead, Mr. Garcia.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board, Superintendent Peña. We are recommending two civil engineers for these projects. The first is Javier Inojosa Engineering out of McAllen. The second is Ramiro Gutierrez out of Fort Texas. And based on the proposals, we are assigning the multipurpose center to Javier Inojosa and Guruya Middle School to Ramiro Gutierrez. We're pending proposals for the drainage, the civil work on the drainage and the civil work on the canopies, so we can assign those, those two projects. We should have these proposals probably by next week.
The drainage was to what campus?
Ford Ringgold, sir.
Is there Ford Ring?
So the motion would be to, you know, approve this, these civil engineers?
This is our administrative recommendation, sir, these two individuals, and that is for Guruya Middle School and the multipurpose center. So those...
Those are the best values, correct?
Yes, sir, correct.
But then with the extra authority that, to get quotes on the other two?
To, the other quotes we receive, you know, next week. And, you know, from these, there's three vendors that they've been submitting. So if it's these same two, you know, give us the authority so we could sit down with legal and look at the...
I do want to make sure...
Why don't we make this, why don't we...
Proper motion here, Mr. Garcia.
As long as the, whoever the other two are selected by administration or recommended, that they come back for ratification to the board.
Okay.
And it's just a timing thing, because it's 30 days before our next meeting, so this way, at least, we can get the ball rolling, and again, it would be...
So how would we approve, how would make the motion, Mr. Bala?
It would be a motion to approve the two existing, and also give administration the authority to approve the next two, subject to ratification at the board.
So that's what my motion is, exactly what Bala just said.
I have a question, though. I have no objection to, to the, to the recommendation, but do you all have any issues with people coming forward and applying for some of these, or?
To submitting quotes.
So, but there are some issues with that, like?
No, no.
Oh, so we're getting quotes in?
Yes, sir, we are.
All right, fantastic.
It's open to everybody, correct, you know? To submit quotes, if they have the proper qualifications, correct?
Well, I'm not sure, because there's a little thing in there. I think the school district went out for RFQs for civil engineers, and you all have, I think it's Javier Inojosa as the only civil engineer that submitted. So I don't know if you're bound to this fellow only, or how that works.
I guess my concern is, I, I just don't know if there are enough people coming forward to apply for them, or maybe there's a particular, there's an inherent fear, or maybe the insurance isn't, you know, covering, I guess, their, their general liability. I, I don't know, right, if maybe there's something that we can do as a board to invite more of these companies to apply.
We, we, we got around that, because we, we have an attachment to our contract, as your attorney knows, and it, it makes it a little easier for these professionals to come in and do the work without fear of what you were talking about.
So like a cure provision, is that what it is, that we're introducing? Because I think, I think the... think, I think the, the fear was litigation possibly, right, and insurance costs and a lot of the litigation. But I think that, you know, maybe, I know we had set aside the arbitration matters, right?
Right. And we're talking about engineers, engineers, it's a request for qualifications.
Because they're going to be held to fiduciary duty, no? I think that some of these at the top, I think those might be.
Right. But for request for qualifications, if only one engineer applies, the board can, or administration can hire someone else that didn't apply. Because again, you're not required to bid for professional services. The question has always become, do we take the arbitration clause out and the mandatory venue? I'm ver, I'm a stickler about that because I believe that whenever something goes wrong with a project, we want them to come to Starr County, Starr County Judges, Starr County Juries. That's why I make, I recommend that venue be mandatory in Starr County, and that arbitration clause be taken out. That's my, that's my-
In the best interest of the school.
And again, I've been through, you know, twenty of these lawsuits, and, and I've heard the argument that, well, people are not applying because you have arbitration. But I think on the last project, there was three different applications.
Right.
And there was a real high bid, a medium, and a low bid. So the bids are still coming in. As far as architects or engineers, the board and the administration is free to pick anyone you want, just like attorneys.
So there's not a problem because they didn't submit, we didn't get RFQs, correct?
That's correct. So if you decide we want to bring in another engineering firm to do that, the, the administration is free to do that.
So I made a motion, exactly what Bautista just said.
And that would be, the motion would be to approve both-
So the motion is to approve both as recommended by administration.
Both as recommended by administration.
And to give administration the discrepancy to select two, subject to future board approval.
That's correct.
Okay, so there was a motion made by Mr. Villarreal. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that motion.
Second by Mr. Peña. All those in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Garcia.
Thank you, sir.
Item number twelve, consider and take possible action on nomination of board candidates to the Starr County Appraisal District Board of Directors.
Mr. President, I'll let you do, you know the names.
Oh, yeah. Item twelve. All right. I motion to submit as names for nominees for the appraisal district, Rogerio Olivares, Encarnacion, Signs, the third.
There's a motion by Mr. Peña. Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Second by Mr. Villarreal. Any discussion required? There being none. All those in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Item thirteen, discuss and act upon a resolution retaining professionals in connection with and authorizing the issuance of rural Gana City Consolidated Independent School District, rural Gana City Gruia Independent School District Time Warrant Series 2021, providing for the payment of such time warrant, specifying the terms and features of said time warrant and resolving other. Is there a motion or any discussion on item thirteen?
I move that we approve item thirteen as presented in our board packet, but with some discussion.
And I didn't finish, I'm sorry. Resolving other matters incident and related to the issuing, sale, payment, and delivery of said time warrant. There's a motion by Mr. Villarreal. Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Second by Mr. Peña. Go ahead with discussion, Mr. Villarreal.
Yeah, I just want to know, what is this? And are we under budget? What is this?
Good evening. This is going to be the financing for the turf.
Okay.
Okay, and basically on, upon this, this is just the time warrant. We were told that we would need to go ahead and put this in this type of terms. We are going to be financing, I believe, one million on the time warrant. And we also have item number fourteen as well that is going to be tied to this, and it's another nine hundred thousand on this one as well. But this is just to go ahead and to approve the financing.
Let me amend my motion to include approving item thirteen as presented in our board packet, and RM fourteen as presented in our board packet. And if I can understand correctly, this is the financing, because we decided to do more fields than our bonds had, we could afford in our bonds, correct?
Correct.
Well, I make that motion then.
There's amended motion by Mr. Villarreal. Is there a second to the amended motion?
I'll second amended motion.
Seconded by Mr. Peña. Any further discussion required? There being none. All those in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries.
Mr. President, and item fifteen, can we just table that till we get to it? Because there's some, there's an item here in our agenda that, that basically reflects approving five thousand dollars and over. It's about lighting up the fort, and it's on, and so right now, can we table for a moment this particular item?
Right.
And come back to it.
Okay, there's a motion by Mr. Villarreal to table item fifteen. Is there a second to that motion? Second by Mr. Castillo. All those in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, the item is table. Item sixteen, consider and take possible action on awarding of the following bids. It's RFP number twenty-two dash eighteen for addendum to district-wide pest control services, and RFP twenty-two dash nineteen for fresh produce for child nutrition program.
Mr. President, I move that we approve RFP twenty-two dash eighteen and RFP dash twenty-two dash nineteen as presented in our board packet.
There's a motion by Mr. Villarreal. Is there a second to that motion? Second by Mr. Castillo. Any discussion required? There being none. All those in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Menas. Item seventeen, consider and take possible action on request for permission to bid out for renovation of Child Nutrition Program Central Warehouse.
Mr. President, I, I move that we approve item seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, and twenty as presented in our board packet.
There's a motion by Mr. Villarreal to approve item seventeen through item, through twenty. Is there a second to that motion? Second by Mr. Castillo. Any discussion required on any particular item? There being none. All those in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Item twenty-one, consider and take possible action on memorandum of understanding MOU between RGC GISD and RGC Public Library.
Mr. President, I will move that we approve item twenty-one as presented in our board packet.
There's a motion by Mr. Villarreal. Is there a second to that motion? Second by Mr. Pope. Any discussion required? There being none. All those in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. It's four to one with Mr. Castillo abstaining. Motion passes. Item twenty-two, consider and take possible action on request for permission to purchase laptops for librarians.
Mr. President, I move that we approve item twenty-two as presented in our board packet with discussion.
There's a motion by Mr. Villarreal. Is there a second to that motion? Second by Mr. Castillo. Go ahead with discussion, Mr. Villarreal.
Yeah, real quickly, so are librarians, are librarians do not have, do not have laptops, or they're antiquated, or they just don't have them?
The way I read it, they have not had laptops in the last ten years. Is that correct?
You are correct. Good evening, Board President, Board members. Yes, the librarians are in need of replacement of laptops. The laptops that, some of them have, give, been given laptops from, by the principals, but most of them are needing a laptop to replace the one that they have. They're old.
So we need seventeen? Is that correct, seventeen?
Yes, yes.
The total cost of ten thousand five hundred and ninety.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. There's a motion by Mr. Villarreal, and a second by Mr. Castillo. All those in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Item twenty-three, consider and take possible action on RGC GISD gifted and talented thirty hours training.
Mr. President, I approve, I move that we approve item twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and as presented in our board packet.
There's a motion by Mr. Villarreal to approve items twenty-three through twenty-eight. Is there a second to that motion? Second by Mr. Pope. Any discussion required on any particular item?
It's twenty-three through twenty-eight, right?
That's correct. I'll give you some time to digest. All right, there being no discussion required. All those in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Item twenty-nine, consider and take possible action on twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two district improvement plan, DIP, campus improvement plan, CIP, comprehensive needs assessment, CNA, and the family engagement policies.
Mr. President, I move that we approve twenty, item twenty-nine, thirty, and thirty-one as presented in our board packet.
There's a motion by Mr. Villarreal to approve items twenty-nine through thirty-one. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that motion.
Second by Mr. Peña. Any discussion required on those, on any particular item?
I just have a question. It's that, the DIP program, is that a three-hundred-page program that Viz Gonzalez wrote up over there?
This is Viz Gina Gonzalez, yes.
All right.
It's a district improvement plan, sir.
Yeah, I remember that thing.
A simple nod, a simple nod.
I just wanted to make sure. All right.
You don't, you don't have to come on. Any further questions or discussion? Would that be the case? All those in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. That was thirty-one, too, right? Okay. Item thirty-two, consider and take possible action on request for permission to attend the forty-ninth Annual Texas Association of Bilingual Educators Conference, TAVE, for one superintendent, one BEESL director, one rural, I'm sorry, rural high school principal, two, you know, AR rural high school teachers, two middle school principals, and one elementary principal.
Mr. President, I move that we approve item thirty-two, thirty-three, and thirty-four as presented in our board packet.
There's a motion by Mr. Villarreal to approve items thirty-two through thirty-four. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Although there's a, on thirty-four, there is a typo. When I was reading it to myself earlier, it was phonetico. So it was kind of, kind of weird. I double-checked, and it's phonetico. So I didn't want to butcher that. So there's a correction on item thirty-four. Any discussion required on any particular item? There being none. All those in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Item thirty-five, consider and take possible action on renewal of RGV lead service agreement for the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two school year.
Mr. President, I move that we approve item thirty-five, thirty-six, thirty-seven, thirty-eight, and thirty-nine as presented in our board packet.
There's a motion by Mr. Villarreal to approve items thirty-five through thirty-nine. Is there a second to that motion? Second by Mr. Castillo. Is there any discussion required on any particular items, thirty-five through thirty-nine?
Mr. President.
Thirty-nine.
May I?
Yes, Mr. Peña.
Okay. On item thirty-nine, I'd just like to let the board know that this, you know, I am requesting for emergency purposes, when we have food service department that needs to order foods. There's been a lot of shortages lately, so we're, the food service has to make, you know, other assessments and needs and, and order. And, you know, we just want that authority in case that we can't, we don't have a board meeting, and we do have to order food for student lunches or breakfast, that we, I have the authority. And then we'll bring it to the board at the next meeting.
Ratification.
I think you're perfectly right, Alulfo. I think that if you go, there's a lot of shortages, not only in food, but products, you name it, you know. And, and I think you need, you do need the authority because, you know, the products may be available today, but not tomorrow. And I think that, that is wise.
Yes. And I'd like to add that they all are, come from the buy board. So they already approve vendors from the district or on buy board. So, you know, we will not be going outside those parameters.
Yeah, there's not an open, yeah, open check or open book, something, yeah. Okay.
And if I may-
Yes, Mr. Saldazar. Please join in here. I was waiting for you to-
Yeah, that will, that will make a change to our COA local policy. And with the, again, we still have to follow the procurement statutes. So it would be amending it as long as it meets COA legal, which is a procurement. Again, that's where we have all the buy boards for our, for all our friends.
Correct me if I'm wrong. All the food comes from buy boards, correct? Most of it.
That would be Ms. Ramirez. Do all of them do miss the buy board?
They're from-
Do we have some bidded items?
Ms. Ramirez?
Good evening, Mr. Board President, members of the board, Mr. Peña, and everyone else here present. Currently, our child nutrition program utilizes several vendors that are part of the Region One ESE Child Nutrition Program South Texas Cooperative. So we buy the majority of our food items from that co-op bid. And they have several bids listed under their webpage that you can visit at any time. But that is really the majority of all of our purchases. Everything comes from there.
Any other questions for Mrs. Ramirez? Any further discussion required? Okay, there being none. All those in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Item forty, consider and take possible action on decorating and illuminating Fort Ringgold for December celebration.
This is, like, I'm on the, on the bids, or not bids, on the five thousand and over. There's an item there where it says that it's basically the cost to, to put all the plugs to light up Fort Ringgold, twenty thousand dollars. And my, my, I just wanted to get the sense of the board. If, if it's something, normally in Christmas, in past, before the COVID hit, they used to have all kinds of, what is it, programs for elementaries, for middle schools, cheerleading and everything. And the idea was to go light up Fort Ringgold, put a lot, get all the schools hopefully to, to buy into it and make their own little decorations as you're going down the fort, and then having a stage and having for maybe one or two days, having kids participate in programs and things of that nature. And just wanted to find out what the board thought about something of, of spending some money and having a great Christmas this year. I don't know.
I'd say go big or go home. I'm just kidding. But, so twenty thousand for the whole, the whole campus?
Well, that's, but they're going to do, they're going to decorate the parade field, basically. In other words, the, the idea is for every campus to have their own section, like, say, Roque Guerra, the high school. And, and then you can go to nonprofits, and then you maybe some businesses, or basically light it up. And, but the great thing is, I don't know, maybe some of you participate or not, but remember all those Christmas programs they used to have in the elementaries? We haven't had anything like that. And the idea is to put a stage in front and maybe bring some snow into the mix. And that's what I'm saying. You say, go, go big or go home.
Triple it.
So how much are we willing to, to, I don't know, the twenty thousands for lighting up, but, but how much more are we willing to invest in something as, you know, whether it's snow, whether it's stages and other things? I don't know.
You want to give us the basics, Mr. Shosana?
Yes, sir. And just to piggyback on what Mr. Villarreal was, was saying, and thanks to Mr. Peña, we do hopefully plan to go big or go home. But we don't want to go home. We want to stay here. The things that we have been discussing, and let me introduce, of course, two ladies that work in our department, Ms. Denise Alanis and Estreala, who are very instrumental in this as well. They also sit in several committees with the city. And the city has reached out to, to us, and they want to plan a joint effort with our school district to make sure that this is the best thing possible for our community and for our students. They will, of course, of course, speaking to the ladies here, they are willing to help financially as well. But as Mr. Villarreal said, how much are we willing to, to, to participate in this? And several of the things that we are planning is, of course, the snow. We are going to have a large area of actual snow with a snow ramp with a tube, you know, for our kiddos. And I, of course, volunteered to be the first one on that. For safety reasons, of course, I want to be the first one to make sure that it is safe. We're also going to have live music. We, we are not going to divulge who yet, but we're in contact with several musicians to see who is available for that date. We do have cheerleaders, drill team, mariachi band, everybody who's going to perform. And we have the dates that are available. We want to have a huge Christmas tree in the middle. We want to have a train going around. And of course, as Mr. Villarreal said, we do want to have every campus and department light up the parade field. That way, as when you go to Real, I mean, to Hidalgo, when they have the Festival of Lights, why, or why is it, what is the reason that we have to go to the valley when we can have it right here at, in Fort Ringgold? You know, the, I know that the city has come to us and, and seen the parade field. And they, they said, according to the ladies, they, they're envious of our parade field, and they're envious of the space that we have. And we want to make sure that we fill it up for the community. Want to make sure that the lights, you know, shine bright so that everybody wants to come in. And we are looking forward to keeping those lights throughout the whole month of December, even when we go out to the holidays. That way people can, you know, drive in, security will be there, light, turn on, turn on the lights at night. And that way people can drive by. We're going to have a little tunnel as well, so people can pass through the lights. We're exhausting everything to make sure that it is very, very exciting for our students, for our kiddos, and of course, for our community. And at this time, we actually ask, of course, for your decision on this, to see if we're willing to go big or go home.
Well, Mr. President, I'm thinking that why don't we set a budget of maybe, with, of course, doing all the procurement and everything, if we have to do procurement or not, at forty-nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-five dollars.
Right. And I just want to, just kind of want to redirect the board, make sure that it's called, ready to upgrade the electrical structure of the-
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. We need to upgrade the electrical structure of Fort Ringgold.
That's what I have on my notes as well. Upgrade the electrical structures.
Because everything did go into decay. Last year, I'm pretty sure we didn't use anything for Christmas.
Okay, so- And the reason is because we have to have an educational purpose.
Well, the question I'm saying about-
Want to make sure that it, that it's, it's to upgrade our electrical for whatever, whether it's a homecoming, whether it's for the end of the year, whether it's a graduation ceremony. We have to be very careful, I guess. My point is, it's saying, oh, we're going to do it for Christmas, or for Easter, or for Halloween. It's got to be, again, we're an education institution, so it's got to be for the purpose of upgrading our electrical structure for any other school events. I think we're-
Well, let me ask, Bautista, isn't, you know, having kids, you know, at, at programs and reciting things, isn't that education?
That, that's-
And let's say, let's say we get away from Christmas. Let's say we have a, a spring festival. Or let's say we have a fall festival where kids go out there and perform, mariachis- go and perform, wouldn't that be education?
And that's why I want to call it the upgrade for electrical infrastructure.
How would you, up to forty-nine thousand dollars, how would you make a motion?
To feature our extracurricular-
It would, it would just be a motion to, to, to give administration the authority to upgrade the parade, I think it's called the Ringo Parade Grounds.
And anything that goes along with it.
With stage, anything that would allow, that would allow and improve the, the parade area for purposes of any celebration. And that's my point is, like you said.
So you're, I, I want to make a motion, how, Balta, again?
The, the motion would be to upgrade electrical infrastructure and any other infrastructure for the Ringo Parade area for-
To educate kids in their, in their, in programs.
For the educational purpose of, of any further festivities.
Okay, so that's my motion.
There's a motion by Mr. Varela adopting Mrs. Salazar's language for item forty, is there a second to that motion?
I second that motion.
Second by Mr. Peña.
Just a, a little bit more discussion, let's be clear, I, I correct, the, the city is also going to put a share of their money, is correct?
Yes, sir, they have been meeting with us.
They may, they may be able to put anywhere between ten and twenty thousand dollars, correct?
That's, that's our understanding, sir, yes, sir. Or more if we ask for more, we're going to address to them to go big or go home as well.
Well, the only problem is that we need to understand that, I call it the Grinch that stole Christmas, we really haven't had a nice Christmas in a good long while. It's time for us in this community to celebrate and have a great time because it's been a long, long while, think about COVID and all the, all the heartaches that people have suffered, it's time we celebrate and, and that's children, parents, everybody.
Totally in agreement with that, sir, and, and that is one of our, our top priorities to ensure that, we talk so much about returning to normalcy. This is something, as you said, Mr. Varela, that has not been done and we want to make sure that we keep on doing things that have never been done before to involve our community as much as possible, so thank you to everybody here tonight.
So that's my motion, it's like Balta said, and there's a second.
Yeah, there's a motion by Mr. Varela, there's a second by Mr. Peña, all those in favor, so signified by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Shosana, thank you. The board will now convene in-
No, 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 we need one more.
Oh, I'm sorry, item fifteen, my bad, thank you.
We need to-
Let me go back to item fifteen, which was tabled earlier.
The one we tabled.
Yes, I'm sorry.
I motion to approve item fifteen and everything in executive session in advance. That does, that's not a valid motion.
We need to include that. Okay, so item fifteen, consider and take possible action on requisitions of five thousand dollars and over.
What did you just say there?
No, he, he added more.
I was trying to get executive session out of there.
Okay, I, I move that we approve item fifteen with all the addend, all the addendums where they were given to us, they were given one, two and three addendums, basically. All the addendums that were created, as long as they're within the procurement law,